Commissioner Morris?
Here.
Commissioner Glass?
Here.
Vice Chairman Hewart?
Here.
Chairman Montano?
Here.
Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Just a couple of announcements. Megan's filling in today for Scott.
Hi, Megan.
You're much better looking than you guys. But thank you for making the trip over for us.
Sure you did.
On your, at your place today, we gave you a copy of Elizabeth Hall's presentation last night on some other additional housing laws that are coming down the pike or in the process of being adopted or have been recently adopted. So if you have any questions about that, you can, that's for your reading pleasure. And then I also printed out the webinar that BB&amp;K is doing tomorrow afternoon on planning in the coastal zone. So if you want to register and sign in and participate in that at home in your leisure time, that's available to you as well.
Okay. First item is to approve the minutes from December 5th. Amanda?
I mean, the minutes from January?
January 16th.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you can do the consent calendar all together if you like.
Okay.
We are moved to a consent calendar item, the same as the city council does. So unless you have an issue and you want to pull one of the two items for further discussion, you can actually vote and approve those together.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from January 16th.
And are you pulling item two?
Yes, and also to motion that we approve item two on tonight's agenda in the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Call for vote? Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Ally seven. Amanda?
Okay, our next item is the continued public hearing for the application for a variance to allow the placement of an oversized sign at 127 Sumner, the Atwater Hotel. This is for the restaurant that's going to be within the hotel property. We held it over last month. I believe that the person with the island company that's responsible for this could not be here tonight, and so I don't, wouldn't recommend that we go ahead and take an action on it. So this was approval to requesting an oversized, a variance for an oversized sign on the canopy that's already been granted an encroachment permit over the entrance to the restaurant entry into the hotel. They, the basis on which they are requesting stating a hardship for the oversized sign was visibility from Crescent, and staff did not feel that that was a valid hardship because the sign's actually going to be behind the large canopy. It would not be visible from Crescent due to the other large canopy entryway that the hotel will have. So, commissions should discuss the findings and see if you agree or disagree that a hardship exists and motion accordingly.
We held it over last time because we were hoping to have a discussion with the island company and myself personally, I was hoping for some better visuals to, I wanted a whole rendering of what this is all going to line up to look like with the whole building. And the other thing was, I see the dimension of the lettering, but I don't see the dimension of the awning itself, and maybe it's somewhere that you have, Amanda, but I don't, I mean, I don't see, I just see the lettering, two feet by six feet, eight inches.
The, oh no, that's the walk off. You're correct.
I know last time, Paula, I'd kind of asked for them to hold it over so they could have someone here to represent them, but they haven't showed up for the second one. I don't see any reason to push it.
To, yeah.
We figured it out today and ended it, but I tend to go along with what staff had to say about it. We still don't have any good pictures to make any good decision on.
Correct.
And no one's here to tell us any better, so.
So I would make a motion to deny.
I'd second.
Do we need to open?
Do we need to, oh.
We need to open the public hearing.
Oh, open the public.
Yes, it is a public hearing, so you should open the public hearing. And there being no.
Nobody else in the room but us.
No, right. There being no input from the public.
So now we played the.
Then you close the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing.
So you would make a motion, and then you discuss it further, or motion and second, and discuss it further, and then take a vote.
I would make a motion to deny.
I would second that motion.
So any further discussion?
Any discussion?
No discussion.
Okay. Call for the vote? I'm sorry, Paula.
Well, I think it's for those, for us to look at, that's really an important part of it because I was standing down there for a long time today, and I, they've taken away whatever it was that they put out for the city council as far as a variance. I know we're not discussing that, but I do think that with the canopy, the large canopy, and this small canopy, I just can't see how that's all going to get there. And they've, and there are no more marks for the large canopy and the lineup, and the only rendering they're giving us is, of course, of Ning's. So if, is it possible that they could bring it back again?
They'd have to reapply.
Reapply, resubmit the payment.
But we did notify them. Staff did notify them. Amanda said she notified them, and that, that she hasn't gotten a response, correct? So therefore, I don't see anything. We tried.
That's true.
We went out of our way to push it back another month to give people a chance to show up.
Yeah.
Okay. Where you can deny it without, why don't you explain what that is?
Okay. One possibility, it's so that they can come back without any issues, is to deny without prejudice, and that just allows them to like immediately restart the process if that's what they want to do, so that you're not sort of putting any bearings or limitations on them.
Because I think under normal circumstances, and Megan, correct me, that I think you have, in our municipal code, you have to wait six months in order to reapply, so they could, without prejudice, they could come back immediately to us, or they could appeal the decision to the city council.
Yeah, so if they, I think either way, with or without prejudice, they can appeal if they don't like your denial. If you deny without prejudice, whatever limitation is in the code as to how long they have to wait before they can come back, you waive that by saying it's without prejudice, and you, they can reapply next month if they would want to. Otherwise, if you deny with prejudice, they're subject to your code limitations.
So the code could be that it's going to take longer than, that they could even reapply?
Well, it's, then they're subject to the six months.
The six months, or whatever the temporal period is.
Six months. Okay.
Okay, you made a motion. Is that motion still in, and you seconded it?
So I think you would want to amend the motion.
So the motion would be to deny without prejudice, and that way they can come back without having to wait that time period of six months.
I don't have a problem with that, though. It's an ongoing building thing, you know. It's fine with me. I second that.
So you amend the motion.
I amend the motion.
We would want to amend the second. You were seconded.
Yep.
Okay.
We can vote on that.
Any more discussion? Call for the vote? Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Wait, wait, to deny it. No, is it?
Yes.
Yes, prejudiced.
Okay. Yes is saying that we're not proving it, we're proving it without prejudice or something, so that they can come back.
Yes.
We're denying it without prejudice, so that they can come back.
Thank you.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewart?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Okay. So our next item is for you to consider possible revision to our sign ordinance to be implemented citywide, and it's contained within Title IX, so that's why it's in front of you. We, as you're aware, several months ago, we received an application to add signage to an approved canopy that extends more than four feet from the face of the building, and we also received an application to add signage as walk-off signs that would be embedded into the public sidewalk. So both of those types of signs are outright prohibited, anything more than four feet, anything on public property. So the proposal this evening is to take those prohibited aspects and actually make them part of sign standards, that's a sign standard can't be on public property, but would allow them to apply for a variance, because there may be situations where you would want to allow a sign that extends more than four feet. There are areas in town where the sidewalk's much wider than four feet, and so instead of it being an outright prohibited sign, it would be something where they could, they would have to come in, they would have to prove a hardship, but they would at least be able to apply for that type of signage. And of course, anything on public property would still require city council approval and an encroachment permit. So that's basically the two changes that we're talking about this evening. The first one, where it says prohibited signs that extend out more than four feet, we're proposing to remove that, but add language that it would prohibit signs from encroaching within 12 inches of the nearest curb, so that any sign that ever got too close to the street easement, that way we wouldn't run into the issue that we ran into with a new sign down in the 600 block of Crescent, where they put up a new sign, and it was right at four feet, but we had a truck clip it a couple of times. So this would provide that protective buffer between the end of the sign and the actual drivable area of the street. Then the next change would be to add into the sign approval standards, we would add that blade signs may not extend more than four feet from the face of the structure to which it is affixed. That would allow them to apply for a variance to go beyond four feet, but they would have to provide for the hardship as any variance does. And then last but not least, we would add that the sign on public property, instead of being outright prohibited, we would add a, an exception to that prohibition, which would be where the sign will be affixed to a structure authorized by encroachment permit and/or lease approved by the city council.
What does that mean?
Well, I think it means that instead of signs on public property being outright prohibited, that it's possible that they may be able to request a sign on public property, that it would have to be affixed to something that the city had already approved to be on public property.
So that would be like on a bench?
Like on a bench.
Or a planter.
Right, on a planter.
And then like a walk of fame star on the ground.
Right, right.
So.
I'm trying to think of where I've actually seen that, and I can't think of any city that allows advertising on sidewalks.
To be embedded in the sidewalk?
No, it's usually like some other public thing, but not a private sign. And the same with benches or any, and I just, I want to try and underscore it, but I can't think of any other examples, and I try to imagine what that might look like, because it seems very, I think, is there, somebody have an idea? And I'm trying to think.
Well, I think this would, this would apply to that embedded sign in the sidewalk.
Are you talking about like the signs that people just put out?
No, sandwich boards.
Fix.
That's a similar, but sandwich boards, they, you.
They're movable.
They're, you're, that is treated just like if you were going to put a flower planter out in front. You're, you're encroaching on city property with an object.
And that's prohibited.
The advertising is prohibited. The sandwich boards where it's like a menu board, or a special of the day, those type of things are treated like menu boards, and they require an encroachment permit, but they're not treated like advertise, business advertising, that type, a sign.
So I'm thinking.
Eric, please use your microphone.
So is this something that they're talking about, that, that this would be what, this advertising in the sidewalk?
Possibly.
So in our packet, this is a terrazza walk off that is, that is planned to go in, in front of the restaurant, under the awning that was up for consideration tonight. So this, and then they also are, have another one that says Hotel Atwater. I don't believe that has gotten an encroachment permit yet, right? The one that goes in front of the.
No, because it's prohibited.
So they, but have they, they, was that part of the application for the canopy as well as the walk off, or?
Their original application included the walk off signage for both the restaurant and the hotel.
And it was denied?
They were not even allowed to ask because it's prohibited.
Okay. So that's the type of.
Makes sense. So that there's no more, yeah, you can't write your company name all over the sidewalk in front of your business.
Or put in tile, you can't apply for an encroachment to tile an area.
Can't bring my kids by with chalk.
Now, I guess what would happen is, if they did it, everybody else would want it, is what I would imagine.
That is the idea, right.
It wouldn't just be a one-off, you know. And I guess I can, I'm trying to think. I've seen names on mats in front of hotels, but I'm not sure I've actually seen them embedded.
And it may be, it.
I'm sure it exists somewhere.
I wanted to give the planning commission an opportunity to talk about it. If we want it to stay a prohibited sign, then that's the decision that we make this evening.
Yeah, of all the beautiful cities I've been to, I've never, that's not one of the things they jump on, so I'm, I'm just kind of, I don't see it as an improvement to the city.
Right, and I think it's a precedent that could.
Get out of control real quick.
Oh, yeah.
They got one, why didn't I?
Most people look at their feet when they walk, I guess.
But you could put a mat out that says, at your front door entrance, that says, you know. Yeah.
My other question goes with the first part of this. So, and I'm not sure about this, but you would know, is so, so now we are, I wanted to change to the canopy that comes out of the front of the Atwater that was approved, the 27 by 13 foot?
Mm-hmm.
That goes from the structure to the curb.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I was not aware that they have applied for any variance on signage of that, and that would definitely be on the front, more than four feet from the building, right? Or how, did that come, did the signage, that's, I mean, it looks to me like they're going to put Atwater on both sides and on the front, and so that's what I was wondering, is that, so, they, I don't believe that was approved with the canopy, the sign. Okay, so that's another issue that this particular ruling would affect, that it's a sign that's going to be all, all the way, all, all but the little tiny curve. It goes way beyond, it's 13 feet out from the building, so that's another thing. I mean, I'm just thinking, then that, if this would be something, they would have to come back and apply for a variance with this.
If you approved the more than four feet as a sign standard.
It would need a variance.
They would have to come back and apply for a variance.
Okay.
I don't like the more than four feet. I know there's the issue if it's less than 12, 12 inches back, that, you know, you're not going to have the vehicles hitting it, but it's also sign clutter to me, having everywhere you go, signs sticking out over your head as you're trying to walk down the street, blocking your view. I walked down the Atwater side of Sumner when I walked down because my view is blocked on the other side of the street. I think it's a bad thing, I have that much.
This is here for you to discuss and give directions if you.
I see the second one, the blade signs may not extend more than four feet. That is the, only one of the changes that I would be okay with.
And then, see, it's the other part that, that opens the door for this.
Right. I'm not.
I have a problem with that one, but the, if they still, they'll still have to come in and ask, ask for a variance to have it be more than four feet out on a hardship? Or?
The current code, they can't even request it more than four feet.
Okay.
So that's why the first change, we were proposing that with a variance, they could request it be more than four feet. But if you don't want a variance to be a possibility, then we won't make the change.
What do you think, Pauls? What's your take on this?
I. I don't see a reason to change it.
I don't see a reason either.
I think there's a lot of room for creativity within the framework that we have right now. I mean, that would be my view.
Do, okay.
I agree.
I agree, yeah.
Okay, so no to the four feet change, and it sounds like no to the encroachment permit public property change.
Okay.
Correct.
That makes it very easy.
Yes, thank you.
Do we need a motion and a vote, you think, Megan?
It has agendized, I think, so.
Okay, because, so we, since we vote, and we had it agendized as a public hearing for a revision, then I think we need a motion and a vote to not, which would basically be not to make any of the proposed revisions.
So moved.
For the record, can you just do that same open and closing that you did last time?
I'm going to open the public hearing. Would anyone in the audience care to speak on this item?
Hearing none.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Any discussions, or anybody would like to make a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion not to pursue changes to the sign and code.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain. Thank you.
Okay, Amanda?
Okay. The next one, this is, I think it's going to be our first discussion of the new, the changes to our inclusionary housing ordinance to address the changes in the state statutes for inclusionary housing.
I just, before we start the discussion, I just want to let everybody know that I have another obligation at 6:30, so if we don't get finished, I'm going to excuse myself and hand over the gavel to the vice chair, if that's okay. Thank you.
And I think most of the changes are pretty straightforward. The, in the joint meeting that you had with the city council, they indicated that, well, let me back up. State statute says that if you require more than 15% inclusionary housing, that your inclusionary housing ordinance will require review by HCD, Housing and Community Development. So, but at the joint meeting, the decision was made that the city wanted to stay with 20%. So ultimately, when this gets adopted, that it will go to review to the state, and they'll let us know if they have any issues as to how we're requiring 20% instead of 15. One of the other changes that happened is the inclusionary requirement is 55 years for rental units and 45 years for purchasable units, so any inclusionary units carry that covenant for that timeframe. They also, let's see, they also decided at the joint meeting not to include in-lu fees because the city, I think you were there, the council was kind of acknowledged that we're having problems spending the money that we have, and so they weren't going to offer in-lu fees as an, as an option. So, and the other thing was, in our original code, we also included an inclusionary requirement for commercial development, that new commercial development, hotel, resort, or new commercial development had to require inclusionary housing for, they had to provide rental space for 50% of their peak season employees. And that, the state doesn't actually talk about commercial development being subject to inclusionary housing. Most cities just do what they call a linkage fee or an in-lu fee, but Avalon made the decision we don't want to do in-lu fees. So we, I think, have included that commercial requirement in here, and will, if you are still want to include that, then we'll see what HCD says about that requirement.
I have a question regarding that. So that's not a state requirement?
The state does not require inclusionary housing for commercial development.
So it's just in our code?
Mm-hmm.
So if we continue with that, it has to be approved by the state?
It would be part of our code that HCD would review.
Uh-huh.
I guess if someone wanted to challenge it and say, you don't have a right to require that, I think part of the argument is, if you can require an in-lu fee, you're already requiring the development to make a contribution to housing.
So that's what you're trying to head off with, not having the in-lu fee.
Well, you had already made the decision that you, you and the council at the joint meeting had already indicated that you didn't want to have in-lu fees. So the only other way to have new commercial development participate in providing housing is to have them be subject to.
But this, this has been on the books for.
It has.
For many, many years. And if we do go forward with this, with the commercial and development, is there any, I mean, I don't, I didn't really look at the, honestly, the, it's 50%, right?
50% of their peak season employees, and that language is a little.
Because I would like.
Difficult to, what is peak season? What is that?
Right, because I would like to, if, here's the thing, if we are going to continue with this and making the new development create housing, which I totally agree with, 150%, however, I don't think it's very clear, and I don't really, I don't know if we can tweak it and say, because this swapping, oh, I'm going to shut this business down, and then I'm going to open this business, and I'm taking these employees and I'm putting them here, and who keeps track of that, and how is that really, to me, it just doesn't seem like, I mean, I'm going to say it, country club, they're still open for business, and they're supposed to be shut because they took all those employees and took them down to the ground. So it's like, and then the trailhead, I'm going to take these employees and move them to the trailhead. I mean, who's really keeping track on, you know? And I know when we built the hotel 30 years ago, we had purchased two buildings before we even broke ground. You know, it's just that, that was in the code, and that's what you follow, so I just don't think that, I, I think if we do continue with this, that if we can tweak it a little bit to make it clear in this, you know, putting employees and taking them from other businesses, I just don't think that's pretty, like, I just doesn't think it works out.
I like, actually, I really like that idea of not being able to transfer.
Yeah.
Or bank your housing requirements to some other point, because to me, it also creates an awkward situation where you're stripping that from a property, like the old Bonds Building now. In theory, if someone were to be able to buy that property, and they could say, well, if it had this many employees, they wouldn't have to.
Create.
Create new housing because that piece of land already.
It was existing commercial development.
But in theory, right now, that's been stripped from that property, so whoever buys it.
Has to create.
Would have to create housing, and I think the biggest problem for that is that really slows down infill development, and it, it kind of takes away some of the incentive to rehab and to reuse and to use existing buildings in a real good location, as in downtown.
Right.
And then in another.
So it, yeah, so I really like.
And, and in another instance, like these, these, these commercial buildings that are new and up and ready to open their doors, or open their doors, the ones that were approved with the condition of transferring their employees, now they're hiring new employees, both, both, both developments. It's like, ah, you know, where's your housing? So that, to me, that, we have a problem with housing, and that right there is just like, what?
Right, and, and I think the, the conversation that came up at the council meeting last night is that one of those developments is not hiring new staff because of the inclusionary requirement, and so they're trying to function with the same number of employees that they had in two locations that were half the size. had in two locations that were half the size of the new development, so...
I mean...
But they still have, they still have an obligation to address their inclusionary number, so that's still in the pipeline for that particular development.
So if we wanted to add that, would we make, how would we do? If we, if we liked everything on this, except maybe add one more condition, that you can't transfer or bank...
Employees from an, an existing development into a new development.
Into it, right.
And I think the other two things that I would want us to discuss is, we need to create a definition of what is a rental space? What is the minimum that we would accept as an inclusionary rental space for a commercial development? Is it, you know, the top half of a bunk bed, or is it a bedroom, or is it part of a dorm or rental space? And the other one is, do we want to, do we need to make some better definition of the 50% of peak season employees? If, is there a...
That sounds great.
Is there a better way to quantify what would be subject to inclusionary?
Is that something staff could draft up?
Right. We can, we can look and see...
Yeah, those three things, I guess.
So you're talking about housing for employees during peak season, and I thought this came up for discussion at city council and that there are guidelines. Um, I think the issue was, how many people were using a bathroom? And, you know, the, aren't those already outlined in state code?
We adopted an ordinance about, uh, single-room occupancies.
Yes.
And we, in a project that the, um, another developer in town had, we allowed them to convert multi-bedroom employee units into SRO facility, and count that as a, you take a two, two dwelling units and you turn it into eight SROs, and so they got a gain of six, counted towards inclusionary housing.
Right.
So the, the definition for an SRO is already in our code.
Okay.
So if we want to reference that in some fashion...
As a guideline.
As, as rental space, or is that as a minimum of what we would accept as a rental space? Then that, we can certainly reference that code section in our inclusionary requirements.
That makes sense.
So we'll bring back the rental space definition, we'll bring back the peak season employees or a, how to quantify how many employees you're obligated to provide housing for, and the non-transfer.
I, I'm wondering if anyone else here sees how this would really stop from creating new jobs on the island? The more and more you put on this stuff, who's gonna come here and open a business and start this if I gotta go build you half of my employees' housing or buy it for them to live in? I'm just saying, those are jobs that people won't have, because they won't come here and do it.
People aren't gonna come here for the job if they can't find a place to live.
Right, and this doesn't actually change any of that?
I mean, I think it's, I'm sorry.
I mean, we're basically holding steady on, we're clarifying existing city policy, and by stopping the transfer, that in theory doesn't change anything, because the next person to fill in the building is gonna have to provide...
Like in the Vons situation.
And I hate to open a Pandora's box, but to me, this comes back to, to not having clear guidelines of, well, we do have clear guidelines, but I think it's the transient rentals. I mean, that's part of the bigger issue.
No one's gonna take a $750,000 home and rent it out to someone for $2,000 a month. It's not gonna happen.
Well, I know, but...
Economically, it makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. So you're saying they're gonna now rent it out to someone as year-round housing? They're not, they're gonna use it. Or they're gonna rent it, bootleg it, and not go through the city and not pay the tax, and we're gonna chase them around.
Well, I, I, I think that's true, but maybe somebody see, well, okay, just say, for instance, there is a, a, a sale was made on Catalina Street, and it's now going to be a commercial spot, and three families lost their home. So, I mean, I, I just...
It's a commercial piece of real estate, though, it's in a commercial residential area, correct?
I, it is, otherwise they couldn't do it, so...
That, that specific property is in the special commercial zone, which allows for mixed use, and they're retaining the apartment on top.
So, but still, some people lost their housing.
Yeah, and I think you have a really good point, that I don't know if the state and the city isn't addressing, and it's to make, on one hand, we're trying to make it as easy as possible to build new structures, but our experience is here, is you can't build your way out of the housing deficit, because so many houses get built and they're just, you know, they get used two weeks a year. And I know it's not just Avalon, I mean, Orange County has neighborhoods that are empty because they're investment properties and people will buy a house. So all the efforts we're doing to build more housing may not matter if they're just second and third home investments.
True.
So, and I don't know if the state's dealing with that at all.
Oh, it's...
I mean, that's not an issue, and that might be the biggest issue in Southern California, but I don't know, because it's not being addressed.
No, I think the current tenor in Sacramento is they are way, this is a huge issue, and they are going to start, you know, like, for affordable housing is, is, I think it's gonna be coming in our face.
Right, but all the, all the debate is, how do we make it easier to build more homes? But that's not really the problem, we have plenty of homes that are not even used, and it's because, you know, if it's a million dollars to buy a home...
But my point is, if you buy a second home, you're not, you're coming to use it. That's the only reason you're buying this house.
Right.
These are not being bought as investment properties. This is, I sell real estate.
Yeah.
You're coming here to buy a house, and in one year turn around and make a fortune, you're coming to the wrong place.
Right.
It's more of, it's a second home community, you have appreciation, and you're gonna come use your home, and therefore, you're never gonna rent it out year-round, because you can't use your home. And that's, that's my point, you want to be able to use it.
I think in Avalon, that we have to try to think outside the box a little bit, because we are a tourism-based economy, we are also very contained, we're also precluded from most of our employee base being able to commute to Irvine or somewhere else to buy a home. So we've got a lot of layers of issues that relate to housing in Avalon. I think most people would agree that, you know, people are, when they could come here to buy a second home, that's how they wanna use it, and it, that's the market that we're trying to operate in. And so, to the extent the state is weighing in, and that's why they've passed all these new laws, we just, as you remember, we just recently adopted our exquisitary dwelling unit ordinance, which would allow people who have single-family residences in Avalon to ministerially create a second unit on their property. And it, and it has some restrictions on it, it can't be a transient rental, like, you know, it can't be sold separately. So I think the state's trying to weigh in and enforce some of these rules, they changed the density bonus, you know, where cities can allow density bonus, and so, to the extent that we're in a little bit of, more of a unique situation, then HCD might view any things that we add in our code that are a little outside the box, a little more favorably than other cities that... Greenhouse gas emissions, we don't want our employees driving three hours to work, but unfortunately, that's the situation that a lot of people are in. So we can bring these back. The other thing that came up in discussions with some couple of local developments, that if they had an inclusionary housing requirement, could they purchase a property, let's say, a single-family residence or duplex that is currently in the transient market and convert it to their employee housing and use that to satisfy their inclusionary requirement?
That sounds like a great idea.
Okay.
Sure, definitely.
Do we want to restrict that conversion to residential properties and exclude hotel properties?
Isn't there a hotel doing that right now?
There's nothing on the books that prohibits a current hotel owner from renting their rooms long-term, but I'm talking about a, a official conversion, where the hotel goes off the market and actually gets converted.
Do they lose that use, though, as far as...
Yeah, I think that's a lot of businesses, and that's a lot, that's a lot of...
You know what I'm saying? Can they go back to the short term?
Yeah, currently, they can, yes. Yes, currently, they can.
I think, I think the concern there is, if you had three hotels do that, that really cuts into the city's income.
I, that's the reason I'm asking, is I think...
That's how we pay all these people's wages.
Because that more clearly supports our tourism economy, I think we would not want to allow that type of conversion.
And it seems like if we're gonna do that, we'll need one of those clauses that says, also a hotel that hasn't converted to housing for the last five years or something, you know what I mean? Because it would be strategic, you would just go in, turn it into single-room occupancy housing, and then buy it the next week and use that as your house. I mean, you would wanna create a lag...
Okay.
In... Is there any?
And we could also include, convert, convert, convert a residential unit that's currently being in the transient market.
I think that makes more sense to me than hotels.
Okay. Is there anything else you want us...
We just, we lose restaurants, we, we keep losing businesses, and pretty soon, we're all sitting here staring at each other.
I know.
Isn't that what we're doing right now?
Yeah, exactly. But that's, that's my point is...
But then we won't be able to pay our bills.
Right.
You'll be happy to know, we did...
And that's what we're doing right now.
You'll be happy to know, we did get plans in today to review for the tenant improvements down at the former CC location, so hopefully that reopening of that location...
Phone comes back to life.
Former is coming back, is, yeah, so that, that project's moving forward, so that's good.
CC Gallagher.
CC Gallagher.
CC.
Is there anything else that you can think of you want us to look at and bring back?
We're gonna look at it again.
Yes, ma'am, we're gonna look at it again.
Okay.
And then, um, the implementation guidelines are pretty much the guidelines that were already in the code, we've just moved them over into a document that is not part of our code, which makes it easier for us to make adjustments to the guidelines, and we will, if we make informed decisions about these other issues, then we can incorporate any guidelines we need for those into this document as well. Okay, anything else for you guys? All right, we'll bring it back next month.
Do I have to open the public hearing, 'cause it's...
Yeah, it's the same.
So let's open and close it, thank you.
I'm gonna open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this item? I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Do we...
It's a matter of if you know a date certain, when you hear it.
It's not a public, it's not, is it?
If we...
We're not taking it in action.
If we want to continue it, we need a specific date.
You have to date certain, yeah, so you'd have to know when you'd be able to bring it.
I can't guarantee it'll be ready for March, so we're just bringing it back.
So I have to open up the public hearing to bring it back?
You can open and close the public hearing, the alternative was to continue the public hearing to a date certain, so that you don't have to satisfy the noticing requirements, but if you don't know what that date is, it's sort of...
Okay.
Well, so we'll just have to re-note, include it.
We don't know. Okay, Amanda?
That's it. And we'll, um, hopefully, we're gonna bring the conditional use permit, it's gonna be on March, so that's why I didn't wanna put this one on March.
Okay. Um, anybody?
We've met once as a parking committee, we will meet again this month, we were hoping to meet tomorrow, but one of us is out of town, so we'll, we'll work that back out. Just three of us, so we're all, we're in there.
Well, the parking dynamics are way different than I expected with the new Vons.
With the new Vons?
Yeah, I park in there all the time, I mean, there's actually space. And I thought even in the winter, it would be crowded.
On the way here, that I thought, oh, oh, I mean, because I've been also, I thought to myself, there's a lot of parking.
Yeah.
Is, I watched a Samurai, which I don't think they're supposed to be in there, is a Samurai, but not in a...
They're autowets, by definition.
They are, okay, and it's not, but it, he couldn't get in, the Samurai, with the cart parked next to him, so he was rocking the golf cart back and forth to get it to move not this way or this way, sideways, and I went, ew, ew.
No, that's not good.
Can I park here? Anyway, I thought, but, yeah, I agree, I mean, at this point, but nothing, for me, that whole thing, nothing is gonna be, it's all gonna be summertime before, we really know what the...
It's gonna be riding.
And I think they're, are hoping to have the modifications to that intersection done by summer.
Oh, okay, yeah.
What about a crosswalk?
Yes, and they've got some crosswalks to go in there as well.
You need a crosswalk.
That's gonna be...
There, there are, there's shopping carts all over town, though. Have you noticed that?
They're coming, they have to have a cart containment plan back to the city council by March, back to the city by March 1st.
I had another something that I was coming, this was before I was here, but I was taking the boat out to San Pedro, and I was looking at the brochure rack, and I forgot to ask you about this the other day. So I got this, it's an advertisement for the Toyon Grill at the, um, at the new conserv, at the Trailhead, and it says, "Brought to you by the folks at Blue Water Grill, breakfast, lunch, and dinner daily, full bar and patio dining with spectacular views, happy hour, grab-and-go picnic boxes." I was wondering, is this, I didn't think that, I mean, you can tell me...
The Trailhead is coming back to you for permission to use the decks, which makes it kinda odd that the brochures are out.
Just looks bad.
And that's gonna bring up the housing issue, too, isn't it?
Yep.
And, yeah, probably several issues.
'Cause that's not what their original condition...
They'd be better off staying home.
I kind of watched that, and I didn't think so.
I had a lot of people approach me, so I called Amanda to say, what do I say? You know, because it's like, huh, that's...
We went back, we did go back and watch the video from their original approvals, and it seemed apparent that they, they hadn't quite decided exactly what was gonna be happening with the food and beverage. They hadn't entered into an agreement with tenant operator, and so now that they have, they're, will be coming back to you, and plus, the planning commission in 2014 imposed the requirement that their inclusionary housing plan had to come back to the planning commission, it could not be approved by the planning director. So that's coming back to you as well.
Yeah.
We're not sure it's gonna make March.
March sounds like a big...
And then, I had something else that, that it sort of references the, um, the, the issue of having some kind of architectural limitations for changes on historic buildings, or we're not anywhere on that yet, but I wanted to come at it from a different point of view. I keep watching the renovation that's happening on Catalina, the 214 Catalina, it's the...
Wangar House.
But Belky. Belky, and it is, they have done such an extraordinary job, taking an older beach house, preserving the integrity of the house, and literally doubling the size, creating decks on the top, keeping the yard space, and making it, it, I, I think it's beautiful. And I just, I was thinking to myself, I, I talked to Amanda about this the other day, and I don't know how or where it would come, but I, I, I mean, you know, to me, she was saying, well, how about you call the newspaper and tell, you know, but I don't know, I don't know, do you guys have any ideas about that? Like saying recognition for their...
I, I, I walked that property, and I cannot believe the details that they did to match the origin...
Do they, do they still have Avalon Beautiful? Because Avalon Beautiful used to name a property every month.
You know what, I don't know where that is, people talk to me about it all the time, but I don't know who, where, when, how, and I, so I just thought, you know, I mean, I'd love, I love to, they put so much time, effort, and money into making that being, you know, just, you would never know that was not, you know, and, and plus, they've made it a million times better, it can be done. So I just was, I, it came across, you know, not to be punitive, to be like, commend, you know, make a commendation about it, 'cause I think it's so neat.
When you walk by, you don't see that it's different. I mean, it's different, but it's...
A casual observer, seeing it from year to year, wouldn't even notice.
It's stunning, and so, I don't know, I just...
I'll have to agree.
At least I'm saying it here, that I, I can just say, it's so awesome.
It can be done.
It can be, it's beautiful, so, you know, thank the people that did it, thank the people that, you know, put the, their money and their time, and the, just to say, this is special from the get-go, let's not take away from it, let's embellish it, and they did. It's beautiful. So anyway, that's what I wanted to say.
Anything else from commissioners?
I would like to say thank you to... I would like to say thank you to our Public Works Department and the City of Avalon and all the residents that came together last week when we had that devastation come down through Clemente and Catali, and Clarissa and Beacon. It was just like, I woke up, I was like, "Oh, my gosh, it was crazy." And then within, like, I mean, everybody was out there working. It was really, really hard watching them and, and what they had to do to get the streets cleaned and safe for our residents. I just want to say, thank you, City of Avalon. You did an amazing job. Everybody comes to, it's amazing how everybody has all their differences and opinions and, you know, trying to work, but work together regarding our, our beautiful town. But when catastrophe happens, we all really come together and, and help each other and thank you.
Who pays for that, by the way?
City of Avalon.
Well, they, do they not declare...
Not the island company.
They declared a local...
There's no deal in splitting.
I think it was, was it a state, a federal emergency? Did they declare that?
They declared a local emergency, which may allow us to participate in some sort of recovery. If, if they, because there were a lot of other communities that also had these type of issues. So, if it becomes a state emergency, something declaration from the, at the state level, then we would kind of be in a position to participate. And that was the purpose of declaring a local emergency. And it also allows us to go move forward with some repairs and work under an emergency situation without having to go through any, a longer possible permitting process.
Process.
Right.
Anybody else?
Kudos to the city.
Yes, kudos. Whew, long hours, tough job. Also, on that note, I drove out to Casino last week and I looked up and that side hill where Chimes Tower is, that looks very, I mean, when you drive down the Casino Way, you don't really know, you see all the, like, that side of the hill that came up down in front of, like, the yacht club and all the debris, debris that was there. But then when I went and sat at the Casino to try and get some sun that was shining and I look up and I was like, "Oh, my gosh." It was so, it looks like it was...
Right below it.
Yeah, the Chimes Tower, that wall looks like it just went down, like, so that whole area, I don't know if, if it's the city, if it's the island company, but regardless, whoever it is, I think somebody needs to get up there and get an engineer...
You mean the wall around the Chimes Tower?
Uh-huh.
It's slipped.
That's island company.
The island company's been sagging for years.
But it, the whole side just came down in front of it.
But that's, but lore has come down. That has been an issue.
I'm just like, honestly, I'm not comfortable driving down there. I'm like, "Okay." I mean, so, someone can send an engineer up there to figure out.
Didn't, didn't I hear that they're, that they're trying, they want to do, because it's not just that. I mean, like, there's so many things, you know, there's slides, but we have areas that are on, you know, to me, are in danger of slip. And so, I, I, you know, look at the, is it Wrigley Summit, Wrigley, up in the terraces there where it is, like, it's just, it's not just a slide, it's just, you know, you get those big buses that drive down here and tourists and they get too far close to the edge. I mean, what's this, I mean, is there something, is there concern about the stable, stability of those particular? I thought I heard that they were going to try to get some kind of engineering thing to look at for some of the various locations, like you're saying, that are sort of precarious.
I have not heard that.
Well, if you could reach out and send an email...
But that doesn't mean it's not happening. It's just I'm not aware of it.
I mean, I know that all that stuff comes onto the city, city streets when it comes down, so it's, I think it should be a priority.